Do the tourist stuff.
Yeah, I think it's a beautiful country.
Yeah. Yeah, and they they fly into Scotland first there for three days and then they head away.
Yeah. Oh, that's lovely, nice film.
Yeah, yeah, new fun.
I could really back some of the locals to the specials we need to try them.
Yeah, yeah. It's a male.
A new pretty one, a new pretty one?
Look.
A new pretty one?
Pretty one.
Would say pretty.
Well.
Doesn't have scribbles.
It's all relative. How much is relative? How much of the first bunch of pages are different, any? Probably not, right? The only things that are changed is what you guys can't need and barriers up to it. So the police stuff. So we have updates on that.
Good friend, that one stopped there.
Now, I figured that that now goes out here because the rain will for all of us which means nine one two staff at nine thirty.
Nine thirty?
Yeah. No, we're good to go, but I'm saying we gotta.
You're out here.
Don't need to be. But I have the same, my brain is saying we can't because no one will be connected by the hand. I was wondering if somebody was gonna do that. Well, if you look at it, it's pretty evident. What, in this? No, this. Oh. Uh, because we lost quite a bit of real estate assessed out. So it's like two hundred grams less taxes. So what? Two hundred, about a hundred grand or less taxes. Yeah, because that was one of the strings on my real page, I thought, I just keep coming on the difference. Where's the number of funds nowadays?
It's from Turkey Hill. It's the worst coffee ever. I'll tell you, that Turkey Hill is dumb.
Which one's that?
Me, right here? Here. Everything's broken in it. Nothing works, out of order, out of order. It's bad.
I wonder if it's kind of a pharmacy that's a thing, because that must be.
I think they do. I don't know if there's any. I think there's still some other farms somewhere. I saw for one hundred for coffee and that's like four eighty. I don't fly driving anywhere else.
And Scott's done peeing, who started? I know, that's just Miss Scott's done peeing. Well, he just went down, you know, hey! I thought he was peeing. I thought you were peeing. All right, well, call me in the order, Mr. Roll Call, Mr. Joy, I think Mr. Villo, Mr. Rose.
Here.
Mr. Bittler.
Here.
All right, so I guess it's just us and no local police, we'll start with page one. Now, before, I guess how we were saying, I guess that's three oh one point one is where you say we're down, right? Real estate taxes, is that what we're saying? Yeah, real estate taxes, uh, dropped and, uh, increased to about a hundred grand. I talked to Kerry and, um, we believe that most of it is attributed to tax appeals. A couple of years ago, we built a bunch of expensive homes in these developments and all of them filed tax appeals. All right. Which means they're winning, I guess, they're winning the appeals? Uh, yeah, they, as we carried, said they gave all the appeals. Now, this page, just see, are you comfortable with the cable TV franchise? I know you went down two thousand, but any reason why you went down two thousand? In what? Uh, three twenty one point eight. Three twenty one? Yeah, point eight zero zero. Uh, cable franchise fee has consistently gone down over the years, a couple of thousands left to the crack. Uh, everybody's unplugged streaming, we got, uh, fiber optic coming in, so kind of. So this was just a guess? I think it's just a trend. This was just a guess, then it probably might go down? Uh, yeah, well, we based it off of, you know, how much trended down. Uh, you know, so twenty four was fifty eight and this year we're about five or six hundred bucks less. And, uh, we figured it would be down a little bit more. And then, and my other question, one of my questions would be the three twenty two point eight, you went up, which is fine, but what are we thinking, why did that go up? Well, the worst, there were sewer certs, it's more like sewer certs, but, uh, we're looking to increase the cost of those. Uh, because this costs us more to process them than, uh, we're making. We're getting twenty five bucks to process them and we're spending, uh, well over an hour, so we need to increase that fee and that number a lot. And then the other, the other one, the question I had, three thirty one point one one zero, so three thirty one point one one zero. So why, what's the reason why that's dropped? Uh, execution of decrease. And we're also spending some of that money.
But did you say decrease?
Three thirty one more.
One, the local police fines, the police fines. Oh, three, that, okay. I'm sorry, I was at three forty one, all right. Three thirty, okay, so we were trying to figure this out and we're not sure, if you look at the numbers, we add the numbers together, they're about where they were last year. So we're not sure whether somebody wasn't putting them in the wrong spot. And, uh, we didn't have time to investigate and I'm not so sure what is gonna make a, be a big difference for what we're doing here. Uh, the other thing is they, um, appear to be getting less money in. And I have no rationale why state police fines haven't come in. No guess. And I don't mind, we also went from sixty four hundred dollars in township fines to zero the last few years. Now, well, so you're saying for the local police fines, just keep it your eighty five hundred, because that's just guessing, because of whatever? No, that's what our, your estimate is. Yeah, so we're just not sure why the twenty three and twenty four are so high. So, uh, we want to add state police, we're probably getting state police fined, right? Well, we have, we have not received, we have state police fines down there, but we've not received anything from you, you're today.
Well, I guess why would be a good help, figure them out, but we have guesses, out of the five things we ask, two are guess and two are wise, so finding out would be a big help.
I guess it's possible state fines, police aren't going around about it during August.
They've been holding one seventy six down pretty heavy.
Yeah, I know, is that the other?
They took it over.
Well, there should be some for that.
Robinson has not touched that road anymore.
Well, all I can tell you is, but they didn't, some of the other roads that they said they took, when they said that they won one seventy six, that's not true, they don't have every other one.
The only interstate that they didn't have in the state.
So do we assume then that even though they can do it one seventy six, we're getting no fines? Yeah, I, I have, you know, I could take a chance and see if we can track down why that's like that, but, uh, it's gotta be something to your approach system.
I'm pretty certain they had jurisdiction over traffic violations up there over Robinson, they were only supposed to go up for crashes. Now they took the crashes away, so it shouldn't be completely new, they should have been.
Well, like I said, I have no explanation why in two thousand and three we were getting it unless they changed the law on how they give me that out.
Well, it's possible, but why is it, you know, you don't know why.
But it's like the last few years. I'll keep my little question marks there.
Yeah, right.
And now the interest, I mean, you said the interest would make sense because interest is less because you have less. Anybody else on page one? No, the question, can I answer this? Yeah, and then page two, the three fifty one point zero one two. Now, the grant thing there. Five hundred zero new one?
Yes.
Yeah.
Do you think we're gonna have any grants in there? Well, we, we did receive any police grants this year. But didn't he say working on grants? He is, but that, you can't take credit, he doesn't. And they probably won't be posted until next year. All right, so at some point, hopefully that comes through and that's just a bonus, I guess. And the recycling grant, uh, we will receive that money at the end of October, or I'm sorry, November. And that's also been diminishing as time goes on. Now, is that diminishing, you think, because most of that gets contaminated, it becomes trash and they don't qualify it as recycling? I don't think that we're getting credit for all of the recycling that occurs in the township. So each trash hauler reports to the county and the county tracks it all and then it's all turned into ADP. And it's based on those numbers that they reported being collected as to what we get credit for.
Well, it would help if the community knew that because some trash haulers don't even do recycling, so.
This is my minimal, but the gas tax refund, I guess that's zero? Yeah, so, um, what happens there is we get the gas out here and we, uh, have to reclaim the sales tax or the taxes that we pay when the fuel is delivered. Uh, we're going to the wax carts, there is no sale, there are no taxes on that, and same as assuming we're running totally tax free fuel. So that's all, one last job for somebody to do. Yeah, I see, you kept, now, I don't know if anybody else has anything up high there, but zoning permits to three sixty two point four zero nine, you went back, you went, you kept it the same at forty five hundred, even though. Say sixty two four. Um, say six.
Zoning permits.
Yeah, zoning permits, so all the way at the bottom.
Four oh nine.
Four zero nine.
You kept three six two four zero nine, all at the bottom. Second to last, third to last one.
Third to last, Ken.
Hey, shut. But you kept that the same, even though this year we're doing better, so is that, we're just assuming? Well, you gotta remember, uh, we have, uh, um, three hills of states being built, with people coming in for fences and sheds and stuff like that. And, uh, it should be like three quarters of way built out this year, so.
So we shouldn't drop anywhere. Permanence will drop, or permanent will drop.
It's just like building permits in the next one, uh, one seventy five, and then you have, we bumped it down to eighty five. And one seventy five is probably pretty close to what we've selected this year, although they could apply for a couple more. So let's say, let's say, let's say it's built out. And anything else on page two? Uh, now I guess that, your first one, you have three sixty two point four two two. Your thoughts about increasing the?
People are already unhappy that they have to pay fifty, thirty five bucks to you if they mail your stuff in, it's like, you know, why are you recharging them that? That's what they ask. You know, they pay the hauler and then they are supposed to pay us thirty five bucks.
Yeah, and quite honestly, the thirty five dollars doesn't count, uh, cover the cost of processing that. Uh, I did just get some, uh, I'll say software, that the public haulers could actually, uh, do an app. And report their findings and get it right in, but still at least your problem of the people paying and showing the receipts. So it's definitely something we should be looking at in the future, is how we really want to do that.
I think we can look into it before you decide to increase it, like, you know, people were not happy, they're baffling, playing.
Well, then the question, do you keep, do you keep in six thousand there, are we keeping it there at this point because? Well, you're a day, there's seventy two hundred, huh? Yeah. You're a estimate, I say eighty five, so. Perhaps you just keep the six there. And if it's actually, if there's more. And the only other thing I have on this page really was the dire court, and are we not gonna get any? I haven't reached out to Bill yet, I, uh, I need to do that. That'd be nice. And we also, uh, I think we sent out the bill for, uh, AGK.
Yeah, I was gonna say, Dyer's has been great about, you know, giving us, even when they don't have to.
Yeah, I know, uh. Well, now they're at the don't have to.
Huh?
Well, now they're at the don't have to, that's why.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm saying, I think they were at the don't have to last year.
Yeah, no, that was if they did it because.
Right.
And that. It did a very generous, I mean, we got two backups out, one was fully reconditioned, I mean, plus what they gave us in cash, uh, you're probably looking at two fifty last year.
Yeah, like I said, they've been coming.
And anything else on page three? Okay, I have on this page, the start would be four hundred, four hundred, just minutes. Contract the services. Okay, um, I believe that we can, uh, a little cooperative, reduce that to, uh, under twenty. But I put that number in there because, uh, we need to have a discussion, uh, about some contract and services we have. An executive. I was gonna say, I was gonna say. Executive. I was gonna say, I was gonna ask who's, who do you wanna be cooperative? That is good. We really have, I'm gonna make one on that page. Uh, the one that, if I go on that line, uh, ADP does offer a, uh, an app. That, uh, each of them can, uh, download and put their time in and, uh, would help us eliminate some of the, the contract costs. So, um, I did put a call in to the guy and I waited for him to get back in it to go over it, make sure it covers everything that we need as a township.
And that's put into like a system that you can go in and look at, or whoever the manager.
Oh, no, you, you must, you must approve it, uh, you know, uh, you know, each supervisor approves it and then it goes to the manager off the ADP for payment.
Okay.
Question, we're gonna have that one.
Yeah, because every time we contract services with somebody, it can cost us more than it did to begin with without it.
Well, I guess the other thing with this page is the last one, four hundred and one. Four hundred what? That's the manager's challenge. What seems to be the, anybody in the cabinet saying anything, if they're awesome, if they're worth?
Well, unfortunately, I think that's a fair number.
I, my personal concern is it's something that you need to do your final interviews and determine.
Yeah, you can't go anywhere right now.
You have that number in there.
Yeah.
Okay, any else on page four? And then page five. Now, which is good, but this payback stuff, vacation, sick time, buybacks, zero, zero, zero. Yeah, I'm not sure, I've, I've known to sell out and whoever comes in is gonna have anything either. You say what's involved, right? Unless we're doing it the way that previous fighters did, give everybody up, say everything upfront and. No, that's fine. Don't you guys? And you put the help kit opt out if you take that, that's not, you can have it four zero two three one five. You've got to have the central higher, I hope you're up, let's see.
Yes. Makes sense.
Anything else on there? Doesn't mean we have to worry about those other salaries. Just the system, financial administrative system, they've changed, so we can keep those changes. Just keep them the same?
We didn't have that conversation last week.
The number that you're fine.
Yeah, I mean, if you want to keep them the same, we didn't set it up.
Change, make change.
Page six. Now, the same question, some of this four oh five is the salaries. Yeah, um, I don't know, we've made any decisions on processing increases. We got the, uh, the four oh five one oh three, right, so I don't know. Yep. So we're gonna keep all that stuff. Right now, we're gonna, we're gonna, this is, you know, this is a big budgeting, so. Four oh five one oh one, we don't have to. But I think it should be, but. You want to see if you don't say anything?
That's not what it says, but you have to watch because you up one salary and you brought somebody else in as your financial person, fiscal assistant, call them what you want. And there's a whole lot of knowledge that had to be built into that one. So if you don't kind of take care of her, we could end up with a problem.
Is that, are people on this page pretty much the same? Four oh seven point two hundred, so no hardware, you're saying? Four oh seven two hundred. Four oh seven two hundred. Hardware, hardware. It's five with zeros or? Yeah, we have two thousand.
Two thousand.
Oh, is that a new one?
Yeah.
Yeah, one since I scribbled that, there's nothing on that, that old one had zero.
Why are you looking at the old one?
Because that one I didn't. Yeah, there's no two.
Yeah, there's two thousand.
And we did put money back in four eight seven oh five, uh, because, uh, that is looking pretty ugly as far as the finances go. They, uh, just had a failure after, and I don't know what it's been, watched it. Failure of the new system? Uh, well, it's what, five years old, six years old? So they have a pump gap. So they have to, uh. I got this gonna cost replacement pump or fix it. Yeah, so twenty thousand has to stay. And then the other one.
Gasoline.
Yeah, so this year we're kind of, kind of stuck with what it is, but next year we'll actually be able to break it out by the permit.
Okay.
Because we'll have, either use the WEX system or.
Where it's go? The bottom of the gas, we're at sixteen three year to date, or what, thirty five?
Uh, but anyway, we'll be doing the WEX for, uh, excellence. Uh, excellence and WEX also offer actually gasoline. And surprising amount of savings there is. I think diesel feels over ninety cents a gallon.
On the taxes?
So, I mean, what, what we get off?
Oh, yeah, you get off a hundred percent, yeah.
So, I mean, to me, that's huge. And then anything else on seven? Uh, eight, what's the eight, the waste that we talked about, right?
Yeah, eight's done, it's place.
And then nine, what's that? Is it all changing? That's all only, what's that?
Halfing one eight?
Yeah. One point nine, we're at one point nine.
And with the ten?
And ten, yeah.
Just the ten, I mean, let me start to focus. Yeah, ten, ten was over the age of.
Yeah.
And then fire. Uh, fire material information, we, I just carried that over from the twenty five is off the budget. Uh, doesn't look like anybody's exceeded that amount in twenty three or twenty four. Which one's on?
Yeah, I was gonna say, which one do you own?
Fire material information, zero, three, four eleven, zero, three. Yeah, I think we normally, well under. I think we're normally well under, it's like four hundred bucks a year when we do the order.
I, I, I mean, I just carried it over, I think we're gonna, raise it if you guys want, I mean.
No, that's fine. No, that's fine.
And four eleven, three, five, three, I guess. It's the budget for fifteen or twenty five, it wasn't the best, so that's why I'm down. However, here we're assuming increase, so. The portable stuff.
I guess people may, other places probably often with it and they decide to raise the rates, close it out of time.
Ten percent.
What's that?
Ten percent.
Yeah.
And then the four thirteen, one hundred, you just, there's some more houses on soon?
Four thirteen, one hundred. Yeah, so I have to go back and start looking at the way they're putting this up. Because this year should be a lot richer than it is, and there's another area that shouldn't be as rich as it is. So I think that they're not putting it in their charts right. And someone's going to have to be moved around later on, or going forward. Because we went from twenty three to twenty one thousand to thirty five hundred this year, year to date. But we ended up there doing super reviews for some divisions and stuff like that.
Kind of be helpful, the number of money.
The fourteen, one oh one, huge number this year. And that could possibly exceed, depending on where they come in for the last couple of building permits before.
What extra stuff were they actually doing then?
Which what?
What extra things were they doing that jumping up there, the bridges and everything, or that?
No, code, code service, code services is all house inspection, but it's pre-hose saves.
And twelve, no, they're in twelve, and the EAC would want some money because.
Yeah.
You know, decrease to a thousand. You have to hear on EAC.
But what do you want, build on this two thousand?
No, it's more thousand on a new one.
Oh, all right, okay, just, I'll just keep it the same because they would have wanted to do that donation for the free, frees. But just couldn't do it. And then they're thinking of something like that next year, plus if they want another thing.
Well, there's some municipalities let the EAC fill out the recycling grant, and that's the money they get this time.
I'd have to ask them if they want to fill out the recycling grant.
Either way, it's about the same amount of money.
No, we're sorry, it's about, actually, there's a lot more work involved.
Like I said, money's roughly the same. Doesn't matter how you deal with it, money's the same.
Four twenty nine, three oh four. Uh, the electric, for some reason or another, uh, the electric bill seems to be being paid out of one account. So we're in the process of putting them all back so that each category is paying their own electric bill. Certainly doesn't make much sense for the park to be paying for the township though. Or vice versa.
Now, highway maintenance, more or less, so it's the same attitude.
Oh, highway maintenance. Our favorite. What line do you have?
Well, I'm just, I'm just starting four thirty, I'm just, the first part is obviously the salaries.
Yeah, I mean, um, I did put in for public works director because I didn't hear anybody say.
No.
Ooh, let's hire one.
I'd like to put something in there.
Okay.
So I, I would think a seventy five thousand dollar range would be good.
What's there, what else think, yes?
I just think we're spending more money than we need to, let's look at what we got, because we don't even know what's straightened out yet, we haven't even hired police, we haven't hired a manager. It's like, and some money might end up going to a manager, we don't know that. So why are we putting something in that we really don't need and everybody seems to be working well together?
Because we really do need it.
Again, opinion.
Is anybody allowed to have an opinion different than yours?
I think Barry does a wonderful job.
I didn't say didn't, I said we, we do.
Again, I wasn't having a conversation with you, I just made a statement, that's it.
Uh, I, I'll let you guys remember or what, but this job position was actually designed to be have code enforcement and have road crew. Or public works manager. We're spending a small fortune, as you guys see, on code enforcement.
Yeah, because our code enforcement changed.
Some of which we get back.
And our code enforcement changed, and when we changed them, that ended up costing more work here.
Oh, speaking of that change, then, you know, your line, that's granted codes, why that?
You see that on the door?
Trying to tell my nose around the old one.
I, I can't try to clean up, there's, there's a couple of things I messed with, because they still have Brooks and Fire Tech on, on that one line.
Yeah, still that one.
Which I'll, I'll work at taking rid of.
Uh, well, back to the public works director salary, so are we putting something in there? I would assume the thought would be if you did that, would you keep the lead person's salary there?
I really think we're, you know, you're doing good the way you are, why do you want to spend more?
Oh, I'm not saying, I'm just saying if you're thinking you would want a director, then you'd have to be personal.
You put something, a number in there, nothing says you have to use it.
So, anybody want to put, anyone else want to put a number in there for the public works director?
No, hands away from mine, thank you.
And of course, all this other stuff like other pages, health insurance, vision, dental, that's just the way it is.
Yep, I hope you can do about it.
I want to mention this for everybody's education. The temporary road worker, which was a part time.
My word?
Application, I just stick it in it.
Is nobody in there?
No, he did that one well.
Yeah, he just left.
Okay, yeah, here, just.
Just show it under the door.
Ready to show it under the door?
Yeah, I do.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, I hope it don't send off.
Oh, wait, go through, oh, he'll get it.
All right, I'll email one more, thank you.
Thank you, it was a nice day.
All right, so the temporary road worker here, we actually really more or less employed him all year because he collects six months unemployment, so we bring him back.
And you're really employed?
He's clicking on, I got the notification going there.
Well, we chose not to fight it, so, that's what I mean, so you spend the money fighting it.
Well, I did call, and it sounds like we couldn't, we couldn't fight it, but we're not going to win because I was unaware that you will need to work like two days a week and make a hundred and seventy dollars. And you qualify on what? I said, all those years I worked at the school, could you think of, I could click on the unemployment law for a while.
I don't know, I think we've had enough of unemployment issues and fighting with money and, you know, I think you need to go there.
Okay.
Do I have any work to do? Anything done? It's not, it's all that. It's all that stuff, office supplies, which isn't going anywhere, that's in the, we might have pretty soon, and.
Yeah, let's do it on that one. That, oh, there's trouble. So there, there are a couple of new lines added, we didn't have numbers, so they just say X, X, X. But at the bottom of the page, you'll see Rogers Trailer, which is the trailer we bought in conjunction with the Brexel and Union. And on the next page, you'll see a Blue Bag Roller. And we also added the zero term that we have to devote it. Uh, we seem to spend a fortune, small fortune on it. And we're trying to figure out whether it's time to get rid of that. And we also added tobacco there. And if you look at four thirty seven, seven fifty, capital expenses, we have two hundred and fifty thousand. And there is a mower that we did get a price on, which is about two hundred and twenty thousand. Uh, I did start gathering paperwork to file for the grant. Uh, but that's what that number is, that number has to be in there regardless of if we get a grant or not. And then the replacement for the zero term is twenty two thousand.
So you're looking at grants for both?
Well, that's correct.
Impossible, yeah.
Yes. We'll probably do two separate grants, and get one, I think the other one, you know. And then, uh, you, you guys got the road work, projected road work for next year.
I have a quick, quick question, that line painting?
The line painting.
They painted lines this year.
Okay, generally, we contract and we get, uh, included line painting in, in the contract.
Nice, and that wasn't us doing it?
Yeah, but, well, you know, this could be something happens that we need to go out there and repair road and we need to put lines back on it. That's just a, that's about a thousand bucks, is it?
Yeah, it's not a big deal, just this year, I know they painted lines, but I don't think it's as big.
So we're, we're, we're of the belief that, um, between this number here and liquid fuels, we can cover everything that we have one of the projections. That Don Ryan handed out. No, um, in regards to recreation, we have not heard, I mean, Packer Rec has spent way, way over their budget this year. And we've not received any requests at all for things that they might want to get for next year. And.
I have a question about the playground leaders, and he says year to date, eight hundred.
Yeah, it says eight hundred, uh, we were moving that line, uh.
So what was that, eight hundred?
Uh, they went for complex. So we, we did move that line, I'm not sure why. So yeah, but we did move that to recreation, for education and training. And we added two thousand dollars, or two hundred dollars, I'm sorry. Um, part of the money in his building equipment repair, um, we have a regular hot water heater at the park. Uh, we want to go to on demand, a couple hundred bucks, which should save more than the first year or two. Okay, this is the ugly page.
Which one, seventeen?
Eighteen.
Eighteen.
Well, seventeen, well, one thing in seventeen, uh, with eighty three, one hundred. Which other, uh, four eighty three, one hundred.
The uniform, non-uniform?
Yeah, I mentioned uniform contribution then. Can I just tell that?
We're, we're going to say to stop contributing to one plan next year.
Yeah, yeah.
So. Our total expenses year to, and year to date twenty twenty five estimate is a half million dollars more than our budget. Am I reading that correct?
Well, actually, technically, you are over a million dollars over budget. Uh, because in order to balance the budget back here, if we're going to move one point one million, and did not. So when an order looks at Appleton, it's like you're one point one million over budget. However, I think if you look at the numbers, uh, it's not quite that bad, it's like, uh, seven, eight hundred thousand. But if you would have moved the money, I think it would have been a surplus. Now, um. What page do we have?
I'm standing, he was finishing off on the lottery, but I know that stuff's going to change, I mean, they are going to change, but, um, that page, you're on, you're on the big page now, right?
Okay, yeah, so if you look at here, that three ninety two, nine hundred, which was a million that they were supposed to move over and did not.
What page are you on, Harold?
Uh, eighteen.
You're saying four ninety two, nine hundred, is that right?
Three ninety two, nine hundred, yeah.
Three ninety two.
Three ninety two, not four.
Okay, so let the floggings begin. We reported that we spent our ARPA money. When in fact, we have not. I just got an email from TSAT on how we're starting to come back to everybody for accountability of the ARPA money. So, um, I, I would like to spend the ARPA money on Rock Halla Bridge. And that would pretty much wipe out what we have out there. And then I'd like to take the money for Rock Halla Bridge and carry it over to Gunheart Bridge. Because Gunheart Bridge needs to be replaced as well. So.
And you can do that?
We can do that.
Well, you, so you're saying the four thirty on page eighteen, I guess, the four thirty nine, zero, zero, two. You just, you have Rock Halla Bridge, you just want to change that.
Yeah. And then up there.
Since it's just bridges, bridges.
Yes, to switch names.
Just the bridge.
Yeah.
Just like we did with this Google, as well, we had switched that, so we could get.
Yeah, I, I would just like to do that so that we're reclaim, claiming one of those expenditures. So if we spent it, they can't come back yet, because as long as we spend it on what it was intended.
So you still would want to keep the six twenty five at four thirty nine, zero, zero, two, right? Still keep that.
Yeah, you're going to keep that, right? It's not going to be allocated to Rock Halla.
Right, we just.
Flip the room, yeah.
The one line item was the ARPA money, hell, it's here somewhere.
Six seventy four. Yeah, six ten, yeah.
Now, it doesn't make this budget look pretty because of that. But it's funding that we already have and it's not income.
Right.
Yeah. How do you kind of use it? Now, the question is, of course, we made motions.
To spend it on.
Certain things before.
We, no, we made a resolution to spend it on, and we got the money under condition. I don't, I mean, it was allocated the way allocated it, you know what I mean, like. Your budget.
Now, we're gonna spend it, we spend it.
Now, the other thing that doesn't help this budget either is the road work from last year carried over to this budget. Plus, ex, couple extra hundred thousand dollars in the road work budget, that shouldn't be there.
That's twenty twenty-four.
Twenty twenty-four carried over, just paying in January. So like I said, basically, it'll be even over there, and that's why when you start looking at the numbers, your, your, yeah, your act for it is two million, two hundred and seventy thousand, and your estimate is, we added two million, four hundred and twenty-two. Now, that number can change, but we have tax money coming in yet, but. Those are just the fund dollars. Any other headline I want to shake? Now, let's talk about the numbers.
Yeah, the last page is always nice.
Okay, in the last few years, we've increased salaries by a hundred and thirty, yeah, a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. So wait, that is. No, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, we increased salaries, and that would be able to like a three or four year span. This year, our assessed value of tax has gone down, which is, like I said, probably ninety thousand dollars, ninety or a hundred thousand. So you are at a loss of revenue of about two hundred thousand. You know, it's entirely up to you guys what you want to do with this, but you're down two hundred thousand, you want to increase the village. Now, we don't have a second language tonight, I still don't know.
Soon.
But, yeah, right, we must do it soon, because the county said we're looking for it.
Well, not like that, yeah, so we gotta, you know, our little, there's a bank thing, right? It has to be advertised for thirty days, right? And that's thirty days, not thirty business days. They figure workshops the thirteenth.
So we have to approve to advertise either tonight or on the thirteenth, and then we have to approve in December eight. And then we'll be here, we'll be here, see, after we leave the bridge, okay?
Are you bringing the goods to the bridge?
Oh, champagne. Anybody want that?
You have to do it?
I did, I drove past.
I was there today.
It's open the walls, they fucking set the steel structure, they're not, took some rebar and they expect.
I can see it looks like the goods ready to do concrete.
Yeah.
Yeah, you'd have to, at the workshop, you'd have to advertise, and then thirty days is like that, Sunday before the meeting in December.
Well, I mean, I'm thinking if you guys have no qualms with this thing, don't you advertise unless you want to take a look at it for another two weeks, but.
I'm not in favor of no which tax increase, we'll state it right now.
Me neither.
I'm not either.
Well.
I'm not either.
Why do you spend all this money?
But, you know, when you spend, right, it's two things, we, we spent some.
It's just, it's, I spent the money.
No, well, yes, we spent some, and we've got a decrease in revenue.
The problem is, and I've said this almost to everybody forever, is, is the problem is salaries go up all the time. Cost of living goes up, you know, something, whatever, cost of everything's going up all the time. You can never stay the same, because you just can't. Now, I will still say, long-term, that whole solar thing, fix things, but if you're looking at twenty, thirty years, that would be revenue. That was a good chunk over time, you know, which would help, but we haven't decided to do that. You know, if we're trying to figure out ways for revenue besides taxes, you gotta pick a stuff like that, because that would be great for just sitting back here. I would decrease our electrical costs on this stuff, but, but still, with, with, everybody, there's stuff going up all the time, something has to.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think there's been an increase since these four, two thousand sixteen or something.
It's, it might be, it might not be that far back. But still, no, I don't know, I mean, I think it would sound like you're trying to ponder because.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not a fan of it, but hey. I'll just put the information out there.
Well, we have this.
Alright.
Once we get our year.
One more thing before we depart, and that is reorder. We used to do it at six o'clock, and then sometimes you got transferred on by the planning commission. Do we want to do earlier than six?
You want five o'clock, is that better?
Five, five thirty, I don't care, it's up to you guys.
Well, it depends on when everybody's done part, do I mean?
What date?
Yeah, it's kind of sad.
First money is the fifth.
So we want to say five o'clock, is that what we want to do?
Okay, we'll advertise at five o'clock then.
Yeah, because you don't want to do five thirty in case of the server crash.
Well, you said, the problem was you was, delve into the big planning commission stuff.
I just make sure this is on the, it doesn't have to be a budget meeting for the workshop, this needs to be all agenda.
Right, we could just skip, because we already advertised it.
Did we?
At six thirty. That's corrected.
Yeah, well, we want to kind of six thirty, do it then, or we want to do it just? Workshop? Five o'clock, you posted to six thirty.
Six thirty, it's quick. It's five, six.
All right, we'll keep the number. Six thirty. Anything else, are we gonna adjourn at seven twenty-two, seven hundred fifteen?
We're gonna do adjourn.
Seven twenty-two, we have a second. Paul, Peter?
Aye.
They did?
By account.
Well.
Just remember, whatever you spend's gonna up yours, huh? Oh, you were desperate to have coffee, huh?
Yeah.
I get the soda, it's safer.
Coffee, water.
Hey, I get the soda, it's safer.
A hundred years ago, it certainly helped here now, like the morning coffee, not that.
It was before it was covered in farms.
It's true, yeah, covered in farms. You have to move the wall all the way.
I just do fucker on it.
I, I drive bikers, I throw them all over the team.
Can I have one?
Yeah. I like turkiel tea, that I like.
Oh, really, yes, well, I guess, that's enough, you know, so anybody wants to join in today?
Anybody can join in, yeah, we can just schedule them.
I'll schedule them, the one that I, probably have to.